Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are generally held on the first and third Tuesday of each month in city council chambers here in City Hall. City Clerk Assistant, please call roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Jenaway?
Here.
Councilmember Johns?
Present.
Mayor Protam Odo?
Here.
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Winstead is not present.
She is parking in the parking lot. She's on her way. Thank you very much. I would now like to invite Pastor Jim Sizer from the Laguna Niguel Presbyterian Church to provide this evening's invocation, followed by Boy Scout Troop 700 to lead us in the pledge. All rise, please.
Please join with me in prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for the beauty of this day, for the hints of a new season to come. And especially, Lord, I thank you for the men and women that you have called to leadership positions in our community, whether those positions are elected or hired. I thank you for volunteers that seasoned so many of our town committees. I thank you for first responders that serve us so faithfully and so well. Lord, as our city council moves into the public portion of their work this night, I ask that you would bless them with wisdom, compassion, and perseverance as they are about their work. May the deliberations that are held and the public comments that are offered reflect the mutual respect and civility that is the usual practice of this town. Lord God, bless all here this evening, I pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 700, color guard, advance. Color guard, present the colors. Please place your right hand over your heart. Those non-uniformed and veterans salute. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, audience may be seated.
Thank you so much. We will be down to take some pictures and you can introduce yourself. Good job, gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here. If you don't mind introducing yourself, tell us your first name, what school you go to, and the grade that you're in, and your favorite subject.
Hi, my name is Magic. I go to Dawn One Avila, and my favorite subject is math.
My name is Caleb White. I also go to Dawn One, and I'm in 7th grade, and my favorite subject is math.
My name is Skylar, and I go to Community Roots Academy, and my favorite subject is math.
All right, great job, guys. Great job. Really liked the white glove treatment for the flags tonight. It's a special night, maybe because we'll be celebrating Constitution Day in just a moment with a proclamation. But who wants to dismiss us?
Color guard, dismissed.
I forgot to take the picture. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Excellent job. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you. And tonight, we have our proclamation for Constitution Week. Constitution Week of the United States of America is a guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of drafting the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to give official recognition to this historically significant document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which commemorates this occasion. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. The Laguna Niguel Council does hereby declare the week of September 17th, 2023 as Constitution Week and encourages all Laguna Niguel residents to reflect on the privileges and responsibilities of American citizenship. So, thank you so much for being here. And the Constitution is all over our city council chambers because it is so important that, it's right outside the door too, the preamble, that we abide by this law. So, thank you so much. Do we have a proclamation? Great. Thank you, Jennifer. And we'll take a picture. I'm sorry. You were supposed to come up here, and I'm so sorry, Barbara. Thank you for being here. Would you like to say a few words? Please turn around. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Yes, my name is Barbara Kula, and I am the chairman of Constitution Week for the Mission Viejo Chapter DAR. And it's been about 68 years since we've had Constitution Week. And in 1955, President Eisenhower declared that this would always be September 17th through the 23rd, no matter what day it starts and stops on. And last Friday, our chapter attended the ringing of the bells in San Juan Capistrano, and we never know quite what day it's going to be on. It was a bit early this year. It was on a Friday, but it was very, very interesting. We had the mayor of San Clemente and the mayor of San Juan Capistrano speak a few words, and we all enjoyed the ringing of the bells. It's a very patriotic thing to do at the same time every year. And on behalf of the Mission Viejo DAR, I appreciate your invitation to attend tonight to accept the proclamation.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. Any person wishing to address the city council is respectfully asked to complete and present a gold color request to speak form. These forms are available on the counter that is located near the entry door of the council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak. This is a time for members of the public to share comments with the city council. The Brown Act does not allow the city council to respond to speakers at the meeting. However, staff will follow up and respond to questions or provide information needed. Speakers will be called in the order from the request to speak forms. To allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have another person read your written statement. City Clerk Assistant, are there any additional request to speak forms?
Yes, Mayor, you have one more.
Great, thank you. First up, we will call Birdie Chang, please.
Just a note to tech support, I do not have today's agenda up on my...
That's okay. Technical difficulties. Are we good? Okay. Go ahead, Birdie. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Mayor Jennings, Mayor Protam Odo, and council members, hello again, and thank you for hearing me today. My name is Birdie Chang, and I live at 22 Hyannis. After visiting this beautiful area, my family made a permanent move to Laguna Niguel back in 1994, and I myself have been a resident for 24 years now. When I reflect over the past year, I was standing before the dais exactly one year ago tomorrow, speaking on behalf of the volunteers of Laguna Niguel Youth Soccer Association and our competitive program Laguna United Football Community Club. Today, I'm here to share a story about a great moment. After 15 years of serving youth soccer in and for Laguna Niguel at all levels of play and programming, our oldest boys team delivered on a significant achievement in June. Our football community gathered about a week ago to kick off fall season play and celebrate as one. One team, one club, one organization, and one community achievement earned by LUFC's Boys 2006 Blue EA Team, who garnered our first-ever national championship at the elite academy level of play. The core of this team was formed almost a decade ago of Laguna Niguel players and families that have shared in the commitment and everyday grind to this team's success under the coaching, guidance, and leadership of Sam Nicholson, our director of coaching. Last year, this team was eliminated by Chicago Fire in the semifinals while in pursuit of a national championship, only to return once again to Dallas, Texas this past June, advancing and ultimately facing the same Chicago Fire team and defeating them 1-0 to win the 2023 title. This win means so much more than a title. It represents all the service, hard work, commitment, dedication, desire, drive, year over year, to grow, to learn, to be challenged, to succeed, to fail, get up, try again, by everybody that has given back to our organization in Laguna Niguel. They did it, but we all did it. I want to congratulate and recognize LUFC B2006 Blue EA on this moment, on their journey, and for believing that you can get there from your hometown. Not only have you put us on the map, but your commitment has demonstrated that the smallest of communities like Laguna Niguel can be the greatest and the biggest. You are truly homegrown, and we are proud. On behalf of Villanueva and LUFC, as a longtime volunteer, I want to thank you, the city. This doesn't happen without access to quality athletic facilities or having your support in working with us to provide the best learning environment for our players at all levels of play as they enjoy, aspire, and grow. Your support has been equally instrumental to the experience we can deliver to our community and each generation behind them. Thank you, City of Laguna Niguel.
Well, thank you so much, and we are very proud of them. That is fantastic. Thank you so much. And next up, Jennifer Barb, please.
Good evening. I was going to write a letter, but I thought maybe I'd just speak to you in person. I just wanted to say a thank you to the city council, the Parks and Rec, anybody else who supported the fun summer programming here in Laguna Niguel. I have two young children. My husband and I, we work full-time, and the summer's really challenging to find care and people who are going to just take care of our children during the summer. And so I just wanted to say a couple of programs that we took advantage of, that we were really appreciative of. The summer camp was a great price point, and my son, seven years old, had so much fun. Those camp counselors took great care of him, and he loved going every day. He attended for three weeks. And then my daughter took advantage of the goldfish program at the city pool, so she learned how to swim this summer. It was really great to have that local option versus driving out to Eliso. And then, yeah, lastly, my son loved the diving boards at the city pool this summer. So having that available to kids to just drop it and have fun was really special and a memory that will last forever this summer. So, thank you.
Jennifer, thank you for taking the time to come here tonight. We really appreciate it, and we do have an incredible Parks and Rec department and team. They do an incredible job, so thank you. Thank you for taking the time. We really appreciate it. Okay, we will now move on to our consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar for questions or discussion by the council?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item number six.
Okay.
Same. Item six, please.
Any others? Okay, can I get a motion to move the remaining items?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Winstead, because you pulled item six.
Yeah, okay, so, item number six is the Award of Professional Services Agreement for Niguel Hills Neighborhood Traffic Study to RK Engineering Group, Inc. I, this has been a long project, and I'd like Director Scott, if you could elaborate on some of the history of the project and just so that we can understand why council is being asked to allocate over $82,000 to engineering on something that's already been had engineering studies on.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Winstead, for your question. I have a little brief presentation for you to answer your question this evening. Mayor, members of council, the item before you this evening is Award of a Professional Services Agreement for the Niguel Hills Neighborhood Traffic Study to RK Engineering Group, Inc. The scope of the Niguel Hills Neighborhood Traffic Study, recommended by the Traffic and Transportation Commission in April, includes the holistic assessment of traffic calming measures for the entire neighborhood, consideration of all available traffic calming measures from the past and new, not previously studied, traffic calming measures, education of the residents through extensive public outreach and consensus building throughout the neighborhood meetings that will be conducted with the study. Recommendations for implementation will be reviewed by the Traffic and Transportation Commission and ultimately approved by the city council at the conclusion of the study. You asked for a little bit of a history on the traffic issues up in the Niguel Hills neighborhood. Our records go back to 2015, and in 2015, both the Traffic and Transportation Commission and city council directed staff to install centerline striping along La Plata Drive, which ultimately resulted in a temporary reduction of speeds by four miles per hour. In 2016, the Traffic and Transportation Commission and city council also approved a petition for speed bumps along La Plata Drive. Unfortunately, this effort was unsuccessful as the neighborhood did not provide enough community support needed to install the speed bumps. Later in 2016 and early 2017, an additional effort was directed by the Traffic and Transportation Commission to explore traffic circles. At the meeting, there was a general lack of support that was expressed by the neighborhood, and traffic circles were no longer considered. In December 2021, additional concerns about the speeding along La Plata Drive were expressed at a Traffic and Transportation Commission meeting. Since that meeting, oversized speed limit signs and speed limit pavement markings were installed along La Plata Drive, after which it showed a temporary reduction of speeds by two miles per hour. Additionally, speed feedback trailers have been regularly deployed along La Plata Drive, and there has been an increase in police enforcement of speeds, which resulted in numerous citations. And again, in April 2023, after additional concerns from the neighborhood, city staff from Public Works, Community Development, and Police Services all met with several residents from La Plata Drive and the surrounding neighborhood to listen to their concerns and ideas for traffic calming. This discussion continued at the April 26, 2023 Traffic and Transportation Commission meeting. At the April 26 Traffic and Transportation Commission meeting, the commission recommended a comprehensive neighborhood traffic calming study in an attempt to reach some consensus and find some traffic calming measures acceptable by the neighborhood. After issuing an RFP, to interview interested traffic engineering firms, it is recommended that the city award a contract to RK Engineering. This traffic study will take a comprehensive approach to identify and assess all available traffic engineering tools that could potentially treat the speeding issues within the neighborhood. The study solicits resident input and consensuses through extensive outreach and neighborhood meetings. And should the Niguel Hills neighborhood not reach some consensus through the comprehensive neighborhood traffic study process, it is possible that additional traffic calming measures may not be able to be recommended for implementation, and the current conditions within the neighborhood may remain. However, the emphasis of the study is to find traffic calming measures acceptable to the neighborhood, to build support and consensus, and to treat the speeding concerns for the long term. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
I appreciate that there's a focus on the public outreach and consensus building because it seems like that's definitely something that neighborhood has lacked over the past few years. I remember this very vividly because I served on Traffic and Transportation Commission in 2015 and 2016, so I felt the frustrations of the residents. So hopefully, they can come to a consensus and alleviate their concerns. Mayor Protam, you had some concerns as well?
Thank you so much. Yeah, this is a really important issue. I know I've talked to neighbors, they're very concerned about it, and Laguna Niguel takes public safety very seriously. It's number one. We don't want anybody to get hurt on this street, and it's been a longstanding issue. I'm excited to tackle the problem. I hope that we can get results. I think that's the main concern, is that part of this project is to, and I quote, "build consensus on proposed traffic calming solutions amongst a neighborhood without an HOA." So I would strongly encourage the residents to work hard to build consensus. We need neighborhood leaders to work with this project to make it successful. We need to find consensus. And so, the city is going to spend between $75,000 and $82,000 on this traffic study, and I am hoping that the neighborhood and the residents will get something positive out of it, and it will be a safer street when it's over. Because, you know, we have a lot of places in the city that need help, and I'm excited to tackle this. I just hope we get some good results. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Jenaway?
Thank you. I was at the April 26 Traffic and Transportation Committee or Commission meeting. I'm, council liaison to that commission, and Councilmember Johns was at that meeting too because he was a commissioner of that commission at the time, and it was a really productive meeting. We had well over 60 residents show up to a commission meeting, which doesn't often happen, and it was, it was very collaborative. The residents provided input, the commissioners provided feedback, the residents provided more input, and there was a lot of buy-in with the residents in that area on La Plata, La Vida, in the Niguel Hills neighborhood. I see Commissioner Clements in the room, and he was also very helpful in facilitating that conversation. And there was 100% buy-in from all the residents in the room to do this traffic study. There were a number of options on the table as to what the city could do. There were some lane striping options, some other specific things that we could do on that street on La Plata, but the residents were all in in doing an all-encompassing traffic study for that area, and staff thinks it's a great idea as well. And so, I'm fully behind this, and I, I know for a fact that there were a couple of those residents who are very eager to lead the charge on this. In fact, one of those residents has come to many commission meetings since then to continue to reiterate his interest in this traffic study. So I think it's worth giving it another shot. I think there is more interest from the residents this time around, and I hope we can calm the traffic a little more in that part of the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Johns?
Real quick, you guys have touched on all of it. I sat through that meeting and a couple others through the years there. The problem we had with that area is we were handling a problem in one street, and then the residents would say, yep, you've helped there, but now, it's now happening over here. So this comprehensive study is so that we could look at the entire area and come up with a solution that would hopefully help all and not just push the balloon in on this side and it pops out over here. So, that was the reason for going forward with this study. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Scott, for bringing this again to our attention, and I know you've been working hard on it since 2015, so I really hope we can come to consensus. And may I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to move item six.
In a second? Okay, all in favor? Technical difficulty again. Screen's not working. Aye. All right, motion pass.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, now they light up. It's a little slow. I think we're faster than it is. Okay, great. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Director Scott, for your presentation. We will now move on to our public hearing. The public hearing item this evening is the second public hearing to consider composition of districts for by district elections. City Attorney Smith, will you please introduce this item?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and council. This item is before you, as the hearing was at your last meeting, to respond to a demand made under the California Voting Rights Act that suggests kind of inevitably that when a demand comes in, that a city converts elections from at-large elections to by-district elections. It must respond by doing what's before you tonight and, and over the course of this fall. That is, holding public hearings to take input from your public about voting districts using the criteria set forth in the California Fair Maps Act. So to explain what that criteria is and how the public can participate tonight, we have an expert, Paul Mitchell, with Redistricting Partners, who I'm happy to introduce to make the rest of this presentation.
Thank you very much, and thanks for having me here again. I'm going to give a presentation that is very similar to the presentation I gave last time, but a little bit shorter. And also, we're going to have a little intermission in the middle of it, and I'm going to get to show you a mapping tool, and we're going to get to play with maps and data a little bit so that you and the public gets a sense of the tools that they'll have available to them, because these are public tools that'll be on the website tomorrow for the public to engage. So, things I'm going to cover real quickly, just the idea of districting versus redistricting, talk about the criteria that we have to follow, we'll look a little bit at the data for the city, we'll talk about how the public can engage, and then we'll go over that schedule. And again, in the middle there, we'll do a little break, and I'll show some mapping tools. So, you'll catch me talking a lot about redistricting. In fact, I was talking to somebody today, and I said, I'm going to Laguna Niguel for their redistricting. And they said, but Paul, Laguna Niguel doesn't have districts. Yes, it is actually a districting, but you'll catch me and others using the term redistricting as the act of adjusting these lines and getting the public input and all that process. These districts will determine where somebody has to live in order to run for office and who votes in the election, but outside of that, they mean nothing. You can decide as the city council how to, you know, govern as a citywide body. There's nothing in the law that says that you have to do anything different with your budgets or how you act as an agency. And I have seen, you know, districted agencies. make those changes, it doesn't change the body as a whole, really the character and the culture of that agency generally tends to continue through. So if you really like the culture that you have as a body right now, I would say, "Don't worry, the transition should just allow you to maintain that same culture if you determine." If, like City of Sacramento, you decide the day after the lines are approved, you're going to put on your door, "I only care about these neighborhoods," then your culture will change, but that's up to you. The rules for redistricting are really outlined in the Fair Maps Act, which is a component to the California Voting Rights Act. The California Voting Rights Act is when you do this process, that you need to follow the Fair Maps Act. And that sets out a bunch of criteria that are really kind of common good governance criteria for redistricting, no matter where in the country you're doing it. And the first is the idea that districts need to be equally sized. And when we look at that, we're looking at people, not just citizens, not just adults, we're looking at all residents based on the most recent decennial census. We aren't going to get into the game like when you see congressional districts, where every congressional district is exactly the same number of residents, with a one-person deviation in the state's congressional districts. That is not how we're going to do it. We're going to be allowed a little bit of wiggle room. So we're going to say anything where the largest district and the smallest district are within 10% of each other, that's going to be considered equal size, and that's in the state law. The data that we're going to use is only census data. We're going to use census data for determining the number of people that are in each district, and we're going to use a product of the US Census, called the American Community Survey, to add any additional color to that, like the citizen voting age population, or any other metrics that we need. Let's say you wanted to look at renters versus homeowners, or something like that, or home value, or median income, or any of those things, we'll use the census. We are not using any voter data, we're not using any partisan data, that is absolutely not allowed. California is a state that uses partisan blindness in all of its state, city, and county redistricting. It means that we're not even allowed to look at that data and make any maps based on partisanship. Districts need to be contiguous, which for us is pretty easy in this city, it means that they're going to be whole pieces, each one of those districts. So you can't have a district that starts in one corner and then like pops up somewhere else, they have to be whole pieces. There's this slightly fuzzy area of functional contiguity, where you could say, "Paul, you know, this one major street, people on both sides, like, they're not really contiguous to each other, because, you know, they can't really cross that," and I'll show an example of that in one of the maps. But we'll think about that when we're drawing lines, is how contiguous are they actually as they function as well? This is a city that is drawn a district, they're actually in court right now, where this purple district is not contiguous. It has three parts, and those three parts are not touching. Technically, they might argue that one part of, the lower two parts are slightly touching by one side of a highway, but really, they're not, and this city is probably going to have to redo their redistricting. So we're not going to see something like that. This is another city where we have that idea of functional contiguity. One advocate came forward and said, "We'll draw these five districts all as columns." The problem was that highlighted area there is the 80, it's also a rail line, and you can't cross it with a car. You can, there's one little footbridge on one spot, but really, you're going to cross on Mesa Richards on one end or the other. And so to draw districts that would be all columns would be violating that idea of contiguity. Maintaining communities of interest is another criteria, it's a kind of catch-all big criteria to be using. And the idea is that if you have parts of the city that say have different needs, you want to make sure that the council members here are being elected by those communities that might have different needs. So if there's a hillside community has one set of needs, and a downtown community has a different set of needs, and a, you know, a community that has no sidewalks, like in Sacramento, there's parts of the city that don't have sidewalks, and that might be a specific need in a community of interest, we'll look at those kind of things. These can be very subjective. Somebody might say, "I'm a community of interest because of this," and we might not think about that. But we really want to be open-ended and listen to the community. A lot of people will say, "Well, there's an Armenian church here, and that Armenian community is a community of interest, and there's a lot of residents there," and that's fine. We can look at those racial communities of interest as well, as long as we're looking at characteristics of them that are not about the race of the person. So we can look at communities of interest, and we will look at data about race, but it cannot be the predominant factor in drawing districts. It's a real gray area, and we'll, you know, rely on legal counsel to make sure we're staying within the bounds there, and if anybody has questions about that, I can elaborate more. Some ideas of communities of interest, these are the kind of communities of interest that we see in city redistricting. You know, historical communities, ethnic areas, cultural amenities, maybe the language is spoken, maybe geographic features, like, you know, a beach, or a mountain, or a river, or a, you know, delta. How, the HOAs or neighborhoods, those are all key communities of interest. It prohibits, the law prohibits us from treating as a community of interest political party, any of your addresses as incumbents, or any addresses of anybody who wants to run for office as a candidate. If somebody came up and said, "I drew this district because I want to run for city council, and my house is in it," that's immediately kind of disqualifying in terms of testimony to advance a certain plan. There'll also be some people that might say, like, "My community of interest is that I don't believe in nukes." And in Davis, where I showed that map, that's a big community of anti-nuclear, you know, community, but it's not really geographically identified, you're not really going to treat that as a community of interest for a city council, although their city council did pass an ordinance against nukes. These are the three questions we want to ask when we hear a community of interest come forward. Does this community of interest have a shared culture, characteristic, or bond? Let's say a bunch of young people come in, and they're all skateboarders. Sure, they have a cultural bond, that could be a community of interest. Is the community geographic in nature? You might say, "Well, there's skateboarders everywhere," but the skateboarders might say, "Well, we all go to this one skate park." So there's, now all of a sudden, we've got a culture, a community, and we have a geographic idea around it. And then relationship to the city council could be a third thing to think about. You might say, "Well, skateboarders don't have a community of interest related to the city council," but I, as a student at Orange Coast College, the first thing I ever did politically was argue against an anti-skateboarding ordinance in Costa Mesa. So, that is actually potentially a community of interest. So if there's any skateboarders watching, please come down and tell us about your community of interest. The redistricting should be easily identifiable and follow natural boundaries. This is kind of the visual test sometimes. When you see a map and you say, "Oh, look, it's following major streets, I know that neighborhood, I know that community is different than this community, oh, it makes sense to me." That is what we're looking for in that, that criteria. And then keeping districts compact. Compact doesn't mean small, because when I draw districts in Northern California, I'll have districts that are 100 square miles. But it means the shape. And if anybody is a science teacher in the room, they'll know the most compact shape in science is a sphere. So sphere, box, kind of more like that, less like two octopuses fighting, right? That's, we don't want that, that's not compact. Now, different state laws have different rules about how to define compactness, and a lot of them are really mathematical. One state in the Constitution actually says you can't have funny shapes. But in California, we have a rule that says that districts are compact if they don't bypass nearby population to get faraway population. And when I said that last time, I said, "It's confusing words, you know, word salad kind of thing, but it does make sense after you think about it some more." So the example I gave before is, if we were to draw a district and take the four of us, skip all of you, and then pop up over here where Isaac is, and say, "He and the next person over in the audience, they're the district." Well, we've now bypassed a bunch of nearby people to get to somebody far away, and that would mean it's not compact. This district on the left is a not-compact district. It's four non-compact districts. This was a really, really gross gerrymander that the court said was a parody of the original gerrymander. It was so bad. They, in the 2030 redistricting, or in 2020 redistricting, redid those lines, we did not draw the ones on the left, but we did draw the ones on the right, and easily identifiable, compact, keeping communities together rather than the earlier version that really just split up communities. The public is who we want to listen to. We want to listen to them saying who their communities of interest are, we want to listen to them on input on potential draft maps. The body that's going to adopt the maps is you, the city council, not me, not the staff, not the loudest person, or the people that, you know, the most people that come to the city council, it's you. That's what the state law allows, is for you to be the body that determines the final plan. So you will be considering what you hear, what you see, the analysis, and you'll make the decision. Laguna Niguel's using a tool called Districter, and this is a tool that many, many cities, states, all around the country have used in order to elicit public engagement. It's a university-created project out of Tufts University, and it is kind of the easiest version of a public mapping tool that we've ever seen, and so we've used it in a lot of agencies, and I'm going to show how this works, sorry. So, the city website will have a link to this page, and at first what they're going to see is information about how this works, how to think about drawing lines, stating that you are the body that will be making the decision, and then identifying some of these criteria. Now, there's two things the community can do here. First, they can identify their community of interest. And so they could literally come in here and say, zoom in here, and use like this paintbrush here, and they could zoom in and say, "Well, you know, my community of interest is right here, it's where the city hall is, and where the Starbucks is, and where this grocery store is, and this little shopping area here, this is my community of interest." And they can name it. They can name it the city hall area and say why this is a community of interest to them. They can do multiple communities of interest when they do this. If they click another little button here, they can now draw another community of interest, and they can name that. They can hit the little button there, and they can draw another community of interest. These don't have to be a certain population, they don't have to mean anything to anybody but them. They are using the census geography, that's why you have the weird shapes, you're not just drawing a circle like with a marker. So they're, you know, used, they're drawn in a way that are more usable in the redistricting context, but it allows the public to really say what their communities of interest are, and when we draw districts, if you say, "Hey, Paul, we had that one city hall community of interest, can you show me where that city hall community of interest is in the map we're considering?" I'll do an overlay that shows the two, so you can see how it fits. That's one thing that people can do. Get my mouse back over here. Sorry, the mouse is being a little funny. I'm going to try to just get back to where I can go and show you the other thing that the public can do. The other thing we'll see people do is drawing actual districts. Now, this is the second public hearing, and we're not actually able to draw districts that are going to be considered, or consider any maps. So what I'm going to do is, we, I think we call drawing an X district. Means I'm going to draw on this tool, but the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to draw a big X in the middle of the city using the tool, so we know we're not actually talking about a map that's going to be adopted. So I'm going to do this just so that you can see how it works. Again, we're going to click on the paintbrush, and I'm going to choose a little narrow paintbrush like this, and I'm going to draw, my mouse behaves here, I'm going to draw a little X in the middle here. And what's happening on the right-hand side as I'm drawing, if you look, see how it's growing in the number, it's actually giving us a calculation, a running calculation as to how big this area I'm drawing is. And my goal is to get to 13,300 or something around there. And when I go over inevitably, or get close to going over, I have a little eraser tool I can do too. 13,128, let's fill this in, and I'm just drawing, drawing, drawing. So now I've gotten way too big. I can take the eraser tool, and I can start erasing, and I can get myself down to that 13,000 number. Okay. We'll call that our first district. It's not a real district, this is a X, right? But what we're going to do now is, we're going to go back into the brushes, we're going to lock that district in, and we're going to start drawing four more. So let's make everything bigger, and I'm not going to be perfect, but I'm just going to draw four more until this one gets to 13,000, a little bit more, I'll use the eraser tool, erase a little bit. And then I'm going to go to another one, and draw this to be 13,000, and so on. And as you can see, it's real easy for me to kind of start drawing these districts, and start to shave out till I get down the right population, and it's kind of like a fun game, and the public does actually have a lot of fun drawing these. And in doing it, there's two really, really, really important things that happens when the public draws this. One is you're getting input from them. The second is they're realizing kind of how hard this is. It is almost like, you know, every morning I play Wordle with my mom, and I texture my results, right? And my wife's now doing it too, my brother, but it's a little puzzle. And this has the same effect, because somebody might say, "Well, I really want this area to be a district and that area to be a district." And then they start drawing, and they realize, "Oh my God, these don't actually fit," and they have to balance it. Now, when we draw on these districts, we'll just stop there, I'm going to show you, you can evaluate these districts, and you can look and say, "Okay, this district number one, 79% white, 9.7% Latino, 7.6% Asian." You can see the most Latino district I've drawn so far is district number three, at 14.4% Latino. Most Asian district I've drawn is district number two, at 17% Asian. We're not in a situation where we have a Voting Rights Act issue, so we're not going to be doing a thing where, you know, the attorneys tell us to increase the number of Asians in one district or Latinos in others, that's just not going to happen here. But this is just kind of for information purposes. And when someone's done with this, there's two things they can do when they've decided, like, "Oh my gosh, I just drew the greatest map, I want to, I want to start telling the world." They can hit save. And when they save it, there's going to be two things they can do. You can copy this plan to your clipboard, and you can just email it to somebody. It's not a public map yet, nobody else is seeing that you did the work, this is just the public doing it and enjoying it. They could also, if they wanted to, name it something, and actually share it to the gallery. And now, when other members of their community, or you, go to the gallery, you'll see those maps. And this should populate with, you know, two, or four, or eight, or 30 maps being drawn by the public. We will download these maps, and we will provide them to you in a real detailed PDF format, a much more detailed map than is in the public tool, but we'll do that for you when we have our next hearing, we'll have those in that format. But this is a really, really, really valuable tool, and it emphasizes simplicity, and the goal is to use it as a way to get a lot of community feedback that is helpful throughout the rest of the process. Questions on that, by the way, before I go away? Okay.
Yes, I have some questions.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation.
I have more, that was the intermission.
Okay, I have questions about that specific.
Districter, cool.
Districter.
Yeah.
Districter. Last hearing, you talked about census blocks.
Yeah.
And so I see on this map, there's a bunch of what look to be portions of neighborhoods, maybe a few blocks in each, are those the census blocks we're talking about?
Yeah, and the census doesn't draw these blocks with us in mind, okay? So you have little areas like this, that are a census block in the middle of a neighborhood, and it's just like a little isolated area. So this is what the census blocks look like, those little tiny weirdly shaped areas, like that.
All right, so, okay, so when we go through the process of drawing the map, and you like the map that you've put together, and you hit share to gallery, what does that mean? Where does it go?
Exactly. So when we go to the, back to the front page here, where we had all that information about what you can do, down here where it says public gallery, all those maps are going to be presented. And you can click on the map, and you can view it, and if you start drawing anything, you can save it as a new map. So that gallery will be for people who want their map to be public. There's also a way to save it as a work in progress, so that you can come back to it, but we don't generally consider those to be public submissions, because people didn't click the share button, you know, share to gallery, they just wanted to save it, but those would be in the works in submissions, works in progress section.
So once a map is shared to the gallery, it becomes a public map, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And once it becomes a public map, this council will be able to evaluate it and decide if that's the map we want.
Or if that's the starting point for a new map that you want to create. Or if that's the starting point for a new map that you want to create.
Is there a prohibition on anybody who can submit maps? And let me ask that in a different way. Can anybody submit a map?
Anybody can submit a map.
Even if they're not a resident of Laguna-Negel?
No, this is a question that's come up a lot, and the, in no local redistricting that I've worked on have they restricted it to only people within the city participating. So you might have somebody who's involved in an organization countywide, or a statewide organization, or a common cause, or somebody else like that that might want to submit a map. So yeah, they can submit a map.
When somebody creates a draft map using the census blocks, do you at, you or your coworkers at Redistricting Partners, do you have any process of changing that map or filtering that map? Or do us as a council, do we get to see the raw data and the map?
Exactly how they created it.
Exactly how they submitted it.
Yeah. Now, if we see one of those maps, and we get feedback from you that says, hey, Paul, that map is really great, but we know that there are missing census blocks, or there's something that needs to be adjusted just to make it legal, we'll provide that map, and it'll be, instead of saying Map 12345, it'll be 12345 Modified, meaning you know that that person from the public created it. We, as the experts, made sure it was legal, working with a legal counsel and working with the rank criteria and all the rules. And now we're giving it to you in a way that's actually one you could pass. Because if somebody submits a plan where one census block isn't selected, it's technically not a complete map you can pass. It has to just kind of be finished up.
And if you do provide us with a modified map, you will let us know how it's modified, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And you'd have the original map and the map in its packet to compare to it.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
One last thing I'll mention is that you, as council members, welcome to use the tool. What I would suggest is if you are going to make a map, and you want it to be considered map, you make it public in the public gallery. It has the ability to email maps, but I would discourage, and I'm sure your legal counsel would discourage you, from emailing maps to each other that aren't part of the public process. So let's make it all, keep it all public. And in my experience, and this isn't a legal thing, you might want to talk to your attorney about it, but I would say that if you draw a map and put it in the public gallery, that you identify it. Only because we don't want to have a situation where we pass a map, and then, three months down the road, somebody finds out that that was drawn by a council member. That's just my non-legal advice. But that is something that has come up in other agencies as we've done this work. So just some best practices. To finish up real quick, and it'll just take a sec, unless there was another question about Districtur?
Yeah. Councilmember Jones.
Not about Districtur, but if the public wants to submit a map that's not on Districtur, are they able to do that, or is it only in this form?
We have created paper tool for submitting maps as well, where they can, each of those census blocks are in like little groups, clusters, that are a little bit easier. So it's not these little tiny areas, it's a little bit bigger areas. But they can select these areas, add up the population of the districts, and do it in a paper format. That's how we used to do it before we had these public tools. And then literally, if somebody comes to the microphone, and they says, I drew this on a napkin at the Rib Place over down the street, I will literally do my best to draw that in the actual redistricting software and present it to you as a map created from the submission done on a napkin.
One more, one more clarification. The ideal district will have 13,300 people. I assume that's just the total population of the city divided by five.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That's what everyone's did.
Yeah. So thank you for the clarifications and so forth, but I'm, you've mentioned that the public can submit their communities of interest. They can submit maps. But how heavily are you going to weigh the community's desires or their suggestions when you're drafting your proposed maps that you're going to present to the council?
Yeah. So I think the first question, the first part of that would be that the weighing of the maps is definitely something you were going to do. When we are done receiving these maps, October 24th at midnight, when that, when those maps are 11:59 on October 24th, when that is, it's not that people can't continue to draw, draw maps throughout the entire process. But at that point, we're going to have to actually sit down and give you three draft maps, just as kind of the experts' maps. We will draw on anything that you say here tonight. We will draw on any public submissions. We will draw on our own experience to draft those three draft maps. And if at the first hearing, you see those three draft maps, and you're like, no, I like that map that the public did, then that's it. There's no reason that you have to feel like the three draft maps that we create are intended to be like the maps you should adopt. But we will draw them just to give you trade-offs and help you see some iterations. But don't feel as though our maps have greater value than the public maps. In fact, the opposite. I really think that the best maps we've seen in the redistricting process are ones that started from a community-drawn map, where we worked with the agency to maybe nip and tuck a little bit to make sure that it fit all the criteria and responded to other public input, and the publicly drawn map was the one that was finally adopted. And it's possible that all we'll do is do three modified versions of public plans and tell you these are our A, B, and C from the public plans, the ones that seem to meet the best criteria.
Any other questions? Okay.
Last little bit, just to finish up. Your city, as it is currently, the population at the top is your total population broken down into ethnic groups, and the bottom one is the citizen voting age population. Right now, you only have one column. When you see districts, there's going to be five columns, one for each of the districts. We're here on September 19th, the bolded meeting. November 7th, we're going to have a introduction of draft plans, where you'll get to see plans that we've drafted, plans that the public has drafted. That'll be a really informative hearing, and we'll look to get feedback on those maps. Sometimes we might have the first two meetings, and only a couple of people from the community come up. Then we have the third meeting, they see the maps, and oh, my Lord, you know, now you've got 30 people lined up at the microphone, and it's a great part of the process. So encourage that. The December 4th hearing is what I consider the, December 5th is what I consider probably the most important hearing in terms of the culmination of the process, because at that hearing, you're going to have seen many draft maps, you're going to have given feedback, we'll have revisions, and you need to narrow it down to one plan. One plan that will be public on the city's website for seven days, so that you can have a hearing in January, where you'll make a final vote and adoption of a final plan. If, at that January hearing, you want to move a line, or adjust something, or make a change, and propose a new map, that's great. You're just going to have to have another meeting to hear it again with a seven-day window of that map being public and have it again. And that's the process. You cannot walk in to a meeting and say, I just found the most magical map out in the lobby, and pass it. It has to be a public map that's been on the website for seven days. So tonight, the idea is receive any public testimony, give me any feedback. If there's things that I've said just kind of anecdotally, like, don't cross a major street, or keep this, you know, neighborhood together, or treat the hillside area different than the more urban area, those kind of things are great feedback. And direct me and as, and your staff to kind of engage this process of drawing some draft maps based on the rank criteria. At that next hearing, we will review these maps. You will give me feedback. We'll continue to hear public testimony. And then you'll give me suggestions as changes that you want to see, either to the draft maps we created, or to the draft map the public created, and treat it as an iterative process. So that, the idea is to kind of start narrowing down to what kind of maps you want to see. And with that, I'm happy to take any other questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Otto.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Mitchell. On November 7th, the public hearing number three, that's when the public will see some of these draft maps, correct?
The public will see the draft maps on the website seven days before.
Okay, great.
So they will be on the website seven days before the hearing.
Okay. So what will you present to this council? Will you present all of the maps that are submitted?
So, believe it or not, the next hearing, I will do those first several slides to talk about the criteria again, just in case people haven't been paying attention to these first two hearings. And then I will present on the first, on the draft maps we've created, discuss what public maps have been done. And we will have a, you know, virtual packet of PDFs that you can look at prior to that meeting, that if you say, hey, Paul, Map 12345 looks amazing. Can you talk about that map? Or can you tell me why Map 5678 isn't legal? And, you know, it has a 30% deviation, and why can't we just do that anyway? That's the conversation we'll have.
Okay. So you will present all the maps that the public, or the?
I will present the three maps that we create with a more elaborate kind of presentation. But then if you pick a map out of the pile of public submissions, I will be ready to talk about it, because I will have reviewed and analyzed all the maps.
Okay. Excellent. And then, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment. We're actually going to rank them as well, as it relates to viable, non-viable, and viable if a minor modification is made, so that it's.
Yeah, thank you, Justin.
It's more efficient through the process.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, when we give you the maps, it's not just going to be a big pile of maps. We will kind of segment them, as Justin mentioned, that there will be some maps that are perfectly viable. They're perfectly within the deviation, every census block is covered, everything's good. There will be some maps that are so nearly viable that they just are missing a census block or something. There'll be some maps that people submit, we've had, we had, they might submit, you know, maps where there's a 90% deviation, and we'll just say like this, would need to be significantly changed to make any, make it legal.
Okay. So you present viable and non-viable maps on November 7th. And then, so that is past the deadline of when the public can submit maps. So then the process moving forward, no?
There's a, I don't even like using the word deadline.
Okay.
I like to say that on that October 24th, if they want their public submission to influence that's a November 7th hearing, it needs to be submitted by then, so it can influence what maps we draw, it can influence that hearing. Then, if we have, once we have the hearing, people can go that night, or while they're watching the city council meeting, they can just be drawing maps and submitting them the whole time. We can receive maps, public submissions, the entire time through. The question is, if somebody submits a map at, you know, 7:24 on your January hearing, it's going to be really just hard for us to actually do anything with it.
Okay, but from a practical standpoint, and if we get a good number of viable maps, moving forward through the month of November, or for the next, I guess for the December 5th public hearing, we can take a look at some of those submissions, and this body can tweak them.
Yeah.
And we'll call it then that modified map that you were referring to.
If it's, you know, Plan C, it'll be Plan C1, Plan C2, Plan C3. We won't ever like take a map that's been drawn off the website, but we will add to it different iterations of that map.
And we'll just discuss that and how that would be.
And it's all going to be done in public. So there's not going to be a closed session or anything else discussing all the redistricting matters will be in public.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Jeneway.
I have a question about viability with these maps. I assume you're just looking for minimum qualifications, such as ensuring that the districts are equal in population, no more than 10% deviation, right?
Yeah. So the, we're looking at the objective measurable criteria, so equal population and contiguous.
Contiguous, okay. I really like the fact that anybody can submit a map, and this entire council will get to review every map submitted by every resident. That's very important to me, and I'm sure that's important to this entire council. So thank you for making that available on this service.
Of course.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. We will now move on to, we will open the public hearing and take any public comments. The first public comment I have is from Cheryl.
Yes. Having listened to our last presentation, and the fact that we are kind of locked into this, I've already proposed a map, and I would like to present that at some point. In looking at our existing maps of the city, school boundary is very critical, as are associations, and as are zoning. So in looking at this, I thought one of the most contiguous things to look at is what our elementary schools have. And I believe that's a very important part of our communities, because there's so much that goes on in elementary schools. There's so much bonding that goes on with neighborhoods and people if they're all going to the same elementary school. So I thought that was very key to look at, and that was one of the things I put together. So I will be presenting that. Also, the other thing that I think is very key, my understanding is that we don't need to necessarily have five districts, that we can do four districts and keep the mayor at large. And that's what I would like to propose here, and make sure that we can do that, because I still feel that there has to be something, some person that's dealing with the entire city. And so I think knowing that that's legally able to be done, I think that's something for the council to consider. The other thing that I think creates some issues is that I don't know how it would be handled, is say, one of the districts that we create decides that the other districts are not in their favor, and they decide to take a proportion of the Laguna-Negel taxes and say, well, we're going to do our own thing. So by dividing up the city, are we opening ourselves up to this kind of discourse? And that was my big concern in going to, away from our at-large and two districts, because it just still seems to me to be a glorified hominid association. So those are the things that I'm bringing up. I will be pre, giving my map to the city clerk and have her take a look at this. Again, I was looking at our existing maps. It doesn't have to be complicated. The only thing I don't have access to is the census, and, but it seems as if when we're doing our maps, as it is with schools, census is part of it to begin with. So I think our elementary schools need to be very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And next up, Gregory Clements.
Thank you. I'm Gregory Clements. Been a resident of the city for 44 years, been very much involved in the city. When I missed the first meeting on this redistricting, I won't say redistricting, that's correct, and brought some things to my attention. And my first notes here say areas of focus, and you're using the term communities of interest, same thing. And I, one of the things I think I will do as, through this process, is, is put some areas of interest that are common to the people who live right there. Town Center Bowl, you know, I've used that term in other, other meetings, but basically it's everything down here that flows into Town Center, everything around it. We all have issues around Town Center, and these are things I'll be looking at and be looking at the maps that will represent us and represent the other parts of the city. We've got a pretty diverse city. It's small geographically, you know, 65, 66,000 people. But a lot of interest, the schools are important, and I don't know if any of the maps show what's an HOA and what's not an HOA. That's something I would have to learn from, hopefully, what's on, on your website, and that might help me. But I just think it's exceedingly interesting that we look, interesting that we look at all these issues that revolve around traffic, the major shopping centers, the major traffic throughways that we have here that affect all of us that live in the city. Some of us more, if we live in the central areas, some of us less, if we live up in the Highland areas or up in the hills. So I'm just, I'm excited for this to happen. The concept that this young lady brought up about four districts and a mayor at large, kind of interesting, isn't it? So I thank you. That's all I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any additional requests to speak for us?
Yes, Mayor.
Jennifer Barb, Niguel Hills area, resident about eight years. First of all, I want to say thank you for the transparency in this process and the education of the last two meetings. I really enjoyed that. But I am a little concerned about how this process relies on public input, when I look behind me and see how few people have attended the first two meetings. So my first question is, how are you going to encourage common folk to participate in this process? Especially those of us who maybe live in an area like Niguel Hills, which we already discussed this evening, we don't have a powerful HOA. So I want to make sure that our voices are heard equally in this process. Let's see. I found it interesting, I had the same question as Jeneway over here, about anybody. I found it interesting, I had the same question as Jenaway over here, about anybody submitting a map. And that would be interesting to see if there's a special interest for some reason that would submit one. And then is it anonymous, this submission? Unless you choose as a city council person to assign your name to one. I think that's a great recommendation. And then lastly, do we get to know the general area of where our current city council members live? I know you can't really answer those questions, Mike. Okay, so that's one of my questions too. I'm very curious to see how this develops over the next few election cycles as people may or may not be able to continue to run, even though they've been serving our, our area really well. So that's another concern that I have in adopting the district. But I totally understand why we're moving forward with this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate it. Okay, any additional forms?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. We will now close public hearings. And is there any further discussion, council members?
Do have a couple of comments.
Okay, council member Jenaway.
And I'll speak directly, or I'll address the comments made by Ms. Barb. As far as community outreach and input, I have been seeing our city put on social media notification of these hearings pretty regularly, I think daily up until this point. For anybody watching and anybody who's interested in submitting a map or learning more about this process, one, I first direct you to the special city council meeting that we had on July 26th. That meeting is on YouTube where we discussed what this law is and why we are being forced to go to districts. Second, I would encourage you to visit our website, cityoflagunaniguel.org/districting. That page is full of information on this process, and I believe tomorrow we will have this districter link on our website. So we will continue pushing out this information through social media. I know we push out this information through email from the city of Laguna Niguel to everybody who signed up for our community email lists. And we will, as a council, I know we will be promoting this through our different channels in the community to encourage people to take a look at the maps, draw their own, participate in this process, and attend the next few hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
I will address Cheryl's comment. Our, our whole goal as a council is to act as one. We are not having a separate budget. We are putting policies in place that we act as we always act. This is only, as Mr. Mitchell mentioned, this is only for elections. This is not for how we govern as a city at all. That is our goal moving forward. All five of us agree. That's how we are going to act as if this doesn't even exist. So only for election purposes. So this is unfortunate. We don't want it either. But we want your input and we want your, all of your comments because it really matters. It matters to us and it matters how we go forward as a city. But we give you our, our word that we will act and govern the same way we always have. So any further discussion?
I just wanted to share that I, prior to what we're going through right now, I hadn't really talked to any of my friends and colleagues who live in neighboring cities, other cities about their districts or anything like that. But this weekend I did have an opportunity. I was talking with a friend of mine. She lives in a small beach community in northern Orange County, and they've been in districts for quite some time. And she shared her experiences with being, with living in a district. She had nothing good to say because she said that we only have one council member. We don't have five. And so just to reiterate Mayor Jennings' comments and the rest of us up here, I don't want that to happen. So yeah, it is just for the elections, but we're going to represent the entire city. It doesn't matter whether you're in a district or not. And she had also, my friend had also shared that they have in their budget a line item for each of the city council members, get a certain amount for pet projects within their districts. And I'm just going to put it out there and say, I don't think that's a good idea at all. So, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Jenaway.
Sorry, I'd like to add to that. I said it last time, we'll say it again because I know some people are tuning, tuning in for the first time. Our goal is that every Laguna Niguel city council member will represent every Laguna Niguel resident. These districts will not matter when it comes to representing you, the residents. It doesn't matter when it comes to voting on the budget. I agree that segmenting portions of the budget for certain areas of town is not a good way to govern. And I anticipate that when we eventually adopt these maps, that we will come forward with some sort of resolution cementing this idea in our council policies and procedures so that every council member will serve every resident, regardless of which district they were, in which they are elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Okay, thank you very much. May I get a motion to accept the maps from the public and prepare at least three draft maps based on the council input and required ranking criteria? I get a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll vote. Okay, aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. This concludes our public hearing. We will now move on to city councils, city manager, and department reports. Councilmember Winstead.
Yeah, so in the past I haven't had a whole lot to say, but yeah, this, I'd like to end everything on a good note and share some of the wonderful things that are going on in the city and have happened and are upcoming. Several of us on city council, we attended the Aliso Niguel High School 30th anniversary celebration and were kind of serenaded to by the amazing madrigals that were there. Still have goosebumps from them, so go Wolverines. Also attended the American Legion Auxiliary Girls State Honorees. They were, people can complain about the up and coming new generation of children who are out there and the things that they get into. But I will tell you, if you met these young ladies who received these honorees to go to Girls State, they came back, they were so insightful, and these are going to be our new leaders, these young women. So if you don't know much about Girls State, the, there's also Boys State with the American Legion as well. It's a great organization and they really help the children communicate and become our new, the, the next generation of leaders in our communities. Councilmember Jenaway and I attended a Cub Scout meeting. I'll probably elaborate on that, but we discussed the rights and duties as a citizen and provided them copies of the Constitution, discussed our roles as a council member and community involvement. Also, tomorrow at noon, Zesty Olives is having a ribbon cutting. So Zesty Olives is located, not, we can, right across the street, right over there. So Crown Valley and Alicia. So noon tomorrow is ribbon cutting. This Friday, two fun things are going on. So if you're not attending the Twisted Gypsy Concert at Crown Valley Community Park, then I hope you're attending the Dana Hills High School Homecoming Football Game. So go Dolphins, shout out for them too. There's a USS Stockdale Car Wash on Saturday, October 7th. So please don't wash your car until then, and then go to the Stockdale Car Wash on October 7th at Plaza de la Paz. And last, the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce is having a Women Who Mean Business Luncheon. And they, it's a ways away, it's November 9th. But they're opening it up for honorees. So you can nominate a, if you know of a remarkable woman who's contributed in several fields, there's legacy, entrepreneurial spirit, public agency, and nonprofit. So if you know of a remarkable woman, then who you think should be receiving some public honorary, honor for her service, then contact Scott Alvey at the Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce. And with that, I'll close my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Winstead. Councilmember Johns?
Stephanie covered most everything, I've, most everything, so I won't repeat that. So I'll go with, what I will add is that the Girls State was amazing. It's the second time I've attended, two years in a row, and we are in really good shape. Those women are going to guide us into the 22nd century, so really happy and looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenaway.
All right, well, this has been an exciting couple of weeks. We've had some really cool things going on. Aliso Niguel, my alma mater, proud Wolverine. We had our 30th anniversary and honored many of the teachers who have been there all 30 years, teal since day one. It was a really fun event. Councilmember Winstead and I also attended a Cub Scout meeting where we spoke about civic leadership and the Constitution. And yes, we handed out pocket constitutions, talked about the preamble, the First Amendment, our founding principles. And it's so important that we continue to reiterate those principles with our youth to teach our history and traditions of the United States of America. One thing I do want to call attention to and bring note tonight is it's been a difficult week for law enforcement, for fire personnel in the region, in Southern California, and locally in South Orange County. A few days ago, a sheriff deputy in Palmdale was just doing his job, sitting in his car, and he was ambushed, shot to death. That's tough. Here locally, over the last few days in South Orange County, our sheriff deputies and firefighters have had to see some things that you can't unsee. And I just want to speak directly to all those sheriff deputies and firefighters who are working the job every day, fighting for our safety, for our protection. I just want you to know that we recognize you. We recognize the difficulty that you face, and you're not alone. This community has your back. And if you need an ear to listen or a shoulder to cry on, you've got a lot of people in this room who are willing to be there for you. So I just wanted to let you know that we recognize you and thank you so much for everything you do. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proton.
Okay, thank you. So for the first time in 11 years, the Orange County Housing Authority has opened up applications for its housing voucher program. So starting from now until September 29th, there are certain income levels. For example, if you're an individual who makes less than $50,250, or if you're a family of four, making say $71,750, below that amount, you qualify for a voucher. And this is through HUD. The federal government gives the money to the county and the county passes out the vouchers. So I would encourage any residents who need this help to apply. It's a great opportunity. Doesn't matter when you apply. It's not first come, first served. It's going to be veterans, then elderly, then disability, people with disabilities, and families. That's the ranking. So you can go to waitlistcheck.com/CA1288 to apply. Paper applications are available at public libraries, and we have them here, right? Do we have them here at City Hall? It'd be great to have them here at City Hall. But they are at the public library across the street. If you need help filling out an application, you can do that in Laguna Niguel as well on September 28th, 3:30 to 5:30. You can go to the county one stop here on Cabot Road in Laguna Niguel, and you can get help filling out that application. Dana Hills High School is having, on September 23rd and October 7th, they do this twice a month. They are collecting your recyclables, and this will benefit their PTA. So bring your plastic bottles and cans to be recycled to support Dana Hills PTA. September 23rd, October 7th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. And I cannot let the month of September go by without recognizing September 11th. You know, this was a pivotal time in our history. You know, there's a reason why we have the phrase, "We will never forget." And that's why I want to bring it up today, because we're not supposed to forget. It was a terrible day in our nation's history. There were a lot of innocent lives lost. Our first responders and our firefighters acted heroically on that day. And, you know, it was a terrible day, but one thing that I appreciate a lot was the patriotism, the patriotism and the unity that this country fought when it was under attack. I think about sometimes our national political rhetoric, and it concerns me. And if everybody would just never forget September 11th, maybe they could remember that we're all Americans. We're all Americans and we shouldn't fight each other. We should work together towards the best of our country. So I too attended the Girls State, and I think those girls represent the hope for our country. They were amazing young women, and they were from different political affiliations, and they learned different things in their experience, but they were the young leaders of today. And so I had one of my students come to me last week and said, I'm doing a history project and I need to ask an adult, why do we remember history? Why do we do that? And I said, it's so that we, you know, don't make the same mistakes twice or so that we can try to be better. And that's what for me, September 11th means. It's to never forget that patriotism and that unity that we had that day. So with that, I'll close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you are so correct. So thank you to our police and our fire. It, it has been a challenging week, and I'm so grateful for the service you guys continue to provide, even in the hardest days and the saddest times. We are so grateful for you guys and, and for September 11th. Thank you for that because we should never forget and we should keep talking about it. A couple of other things, I won't repeat, other things that we've attended the same. But we also started our first junior civic workshop for the school year for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They learned about, from our city manager, and how to rent a city and what that means. And they learned about our city seal. So thank you very much, City Manager Laterno, and to our Parks and Rec team. That was fantastic coordinating. So I think our young middle schoolers will have a great year learning about civics, so thank you for that. And just a reminder that September is Hunger Action Month. I encourage everyone to donate to food, donate food and volunteer at food banks and organizations that feed our community. We need to take action against hunger and to raise awareness for those facing food insecurities in our communities. There are 267,000 individuals in Orange County that are food insecure, and 64,000 of them are children. So join us as we commit to ensure our communities have the food they need to thrive. When people are fed, futures are nourished. So thank you for that. And City Manager Laterno, do we have any reports tonight?
We have one report this evening from Chief Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor Jennings, City Council, and City Manager Laterno, for the opportunity for me to provide an update. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Barrick Hunter. I'm the division chief who oversees fire, rescue, and emergency medical services for the city of Laguna Niguel. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief update and overview about the services the Orange County Fire Authority provides to the city. This is our mission statement at the Orange County Fire Authority. Our customer service motto is "In Service of Others." Our fire chief is Brian Finacy, who's led our department since 2018. Chief Finacy recently received the International Association of Fire Chiefs Fire Chief of the Year Award. We proudly serve 23 cities and the unincorporated areas of Orange County. We cover over 571 square miles. We provide service to nearly 2 million residents with 78 stations, 10 divisions, and 11 battalions. Our headquarters is our Regional Fire Operations and Training Center, which is located in the city of Irvine. Listed are 23 member cities that we serve. The cities in yellow, including Laguna Niguel, are structural fire fund cities. The cities in white are cash contract cities. Prior to the Orange County Fire Authority, Orange County's fire protection was provided by the state of California through the California Department of Forestry, which is CDF. In 1980, the county took over fire protection from the state, and the Orange County Fire Department was started. In 1995, a joint powers authority was formed and created the Orange County Fire Authority. Mayor Jennings is the joint powers authority representative for Laguna Niguel. These are the three stations that are located in Laguna Niguel. Fire Station 5, which is right around the corner, which houses Engine 5 with four personnel. Fire Station 39, which is located on Avila Road, also has Engine 39 and Engine 339. Engine 339 is a Type 3 apparatus, which is known as a brush rig. Engine 339 is a Type III apparatus, which is known as a brush rig, that goes, has off-road capabilities that are used in very inaccessible areas. Fire Station 49 on Golden Lantern houses Truck 49. All of these units in the city are paramedic units, which have two firefighter paramedics on them. We are an all-risk fire department that provide a 24/7 emergency command center, airport crash fire and rescue, confined space rescue, emergency medical services, fire suppression, hazardous materials, heavy rescue, air operations, high angle rescue, incident management teams, joint hazard assessment teams, large animal rescues, swift water rescues, trench rescue, as well as urban search and rescue teams that have been deployed throughout the United States. Our emergency command center is located at our headquarters. In 2022, the emergency command center answered over 175,000 calls for assistance, which is an average of 480 calls per day. A fire department unit is dispatched approximately every three minutes. The emergency command center has a daily staffing of 14, which include an ECC manager, battalion chief, senior supervisor, floor supervisor, and dispatchers. Our field operations are, we have firefighters that are specialized in different aspects and disciplines of the fire service. So they're cross-trained in air operations, fire investigations, hazardous materials, administrative support, public information officers, training cadre, as well as our urban search and rescue team. The Orange County Fire Authority provides education and outreach through our corporate communications section. We provide and assist with citizen emergency response team training, community forums, fire safety, drowning prevention, every 15-minute programs, smoke alarm installations, wildfire preparedness, and youth arson diversion programs. Now that fire season is year-round, we want to continue to preach to everybody about our Ready, Set, Go program, as well as home assessments. We have a lot of good information at ocfa.org/rg. In the last six months in the City of Laguna Niguel, we participated in community events. The Bunny Bonanza, Chaperosa Park, Coffee and Conversations, Laguna Niguel Elementary Carnival, the YMCA Healthy Kids Event, Laguna Niguel Emergency Preparedness Event, and the Sea Country Festival. We've also participated in summer camp and school visitations. This is something that we have done in the fire service for years. This is something I still remember when I was in elementary school when the firefighters came to visit. Our firefighters attended summer camp and school visits at the Village Cooperative, Childtime Preschool, and a couple of visits at the Laguna Niguel Summer Camp. We also provide fire station tours to the community. During the spring and summer months, the King's Academy, Laguna Niguel Elementary Kinder, St. Anne's Preschool, several local families, and several local Girl Scout troops. As far as significant responses in the past few months here in the City of Laguna Niguel, the Niguel Fire, which is 4.2 acres, it was attacked by air and ground to mitigate the fire. We worked with our law enforcement partners. We worked well. We unified in command. Some of the things that we don't talk about with the Niguel Fire that should definitely be recognized is the proactive actions that were taken by the city, as well as OCFA, with outreach, education, abatement programs, enforcement, defensible space, and the fuel mods that helped the mitigation efforts of this incident. We had a two-alarm fire at the county building right behind Fire Station 5. We had strike team responses for out-of-county incidents in Riverside County, as well as San Diego County. Engine 5 and Engine 339 went on those responses. We had a hazardous material incident at the federal building and tropical storm Hillary preparation, where we worked with city staff who opened the emergency operations center. We also up-staffed a lot of resources, our Type 6 strike team, Type 3 strike team, swift water units, hand crew, helicopter, and bulldozers. Under our Community Risk Reduction section, we work with city staff to provide community wildfire mitigation. In the last six months, we performed over 1,700 defensible space inspections, 41 real estate inspections, which are the defensible space disclosure inspections, 16 community education events. And recently, we participated in the Insurance Commissioners Town Hall Meeting and homeowner associations meetings. Our prevention field services provide annual building inspections in the city. During the spring and summer months, they addressed 19 complaints, three special events, and completed 159 inspections. We have volunteer opportunities available for people to participate in all ages. We have a chaplain program. We have a fire cadet program, ages 16 to 21, and we have a reserve firefighter program. These are great opportunities for community to get involved, as well as opportunities for people to start or pursue a career in the fire service. One of the things we do as an organization is we send out a report card, as we call it. But it's to get feedback from the public that we serve. We send surveys out to individuals who access 911 to see how we can improve our service and as know where we stand with the public. I'd like to add, I was transferred to this division close to a year ago. The city staff, the Orange County Sheriff's Department have been very collaborative and great to work with. I want to let you know, as well as the citizens know, you have a great staff. And this community is excellent. They have been very, very supportive and welcoming when I'm out in the community and I know when my firefighters are out in the community. So I want to thank you for your time and the opportunity to share this information about your fire department. That concludes my report.
That's all our reports this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much, Chief Hunter. Okay, we will now adjourn at 8:35. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. Thank you for coming out.